Um. Uh, because I guess I would worry that if we apply for that and get it, there's potentially less chance that we get a part grant for Dallas for next year because we just got this one. So they're gonna say, oh, you just got one. You don't need another one. So there's maybe some bad side to it, but.
Maybe it's a different pot of money. So.
Maybe not.
I don't know that it will have. I don't know. They ruled. It just depends. They wanted. They wanted to pick who they want. And uh, this was a way to do that.
Alrighty, uh, start off with Public Works Director Jeff Hunter. Um, Public Works Road update.
Good.
Acting interim county engineer, Sesska Rola. Go for it, guys.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. Uh, concurrence to award the jail roofing contract in the amount of four hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That was right within our uh, right within our engineer's estimate. We only had one bid, but the one bid was good. Um, uh, uh, local agency agree consultant agreement. But it's in a supplement to expand the time and the dollars for Trejo, finish up some projects we have. Um, another one is concurrents to award Rock Creek Bridge to Panther and Industrial Painting LLC in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. That's for the bridge painter on Rock Creek Bridge over Rock Creek on Old Highway Eight. Uh, a notice to public contractor or notice of public hearing for the franchise agreement with the Vista Gas. We've already received a public records request requesting the franchise agreement information. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, we can get it to leave. She could post it on the website.
Where's this going? Where's the location?
Countywide.
Oh.
Which most of franchise agreements are countywide. The only ones that typically aren't are the ones with the energy groups because they only care about getting the energy off there. But for uh, gas and any of the other utilities bone and all that, they're usually countywide. And this one is countywide. Um, so we can, we can do that, or we could do however the process again. He wants some other stuff, so. On the, on the uh, public records request. Uh, then we have an approval for small works contract with Oliver floor covering for Annex Four. And this is for the floor covering for once we move um, juvenile out and put mental health or get it before all the people from mental health. So we're replacing all the carpeting and ECT in the building.
Carpeting bad or just?
Carpeting's worn out. That's a road cost because it's a road built. So roads paying for that cost. And. And that's it. I'll turn it over to you for construction.
Morning, Grove. We have a pre-pave meeting scheduled for Thursday, the first of June and tentatively start paving on Monday, June fifth. The annual striping project, uh, striping continues this week on the west side of the county in the Dallasport area. They're nearing completion of the first phase of that contract. On design end, we did, uh, we do have the concurrence to award for Rock Creek Bridge on the consent agenda this afternoon. White plastic edge lines and slope flattening projects are currently on ad with a bid opening dates on June sixth. Uh, construction funding approval documents for curb warning signs and guideposts are still waiting washed out approval and permission to go to add. We have requir- proposals due this afternoon for our data collection project. Design funding approval paperwork for the Bickledon area paving project is uh, waiting approval from Wash Dot as well. And design work on Sunday on Old Highway Eight project, the right of way documents are being prepared, stormwater designed, and we're awaiting our approval from DAP on the archaeological report that we submitted. And design and permitting processes are ongoing for other maintenance projects, which include, you know, snowplow turnaround and Bickledon Highway widening project.
Okay, maintenance projects on the east side, we're putting shoulders and culverts on East Road and grading. West side, we're patching in the Glenwood area and doing some grading. Um, upcoming facility events, we talked the other day and uh, decision was made. So there's a sidewalk uh, for lot D, which is the Annex One or where Annex One was sitting and the ramps in lot B, which is where Annex Three was sitting, are scheduled for August. The HVAC contracts are being put together with the caveat, we're gonna see how it works in one of the um, one of the rooms before we go forward. Health will be taken care of like we talked about on Thursday. Um, HVAC and Pioneer Center will be this fall. Can't get the units until then. Uh, jail roof replacement, the award is on the agenda today. Superior Court's the same. Uh, dispatch basement upgrades plumbing is complete. Ceiling grid and s- and fire ceiling grid installation, fire suppression relocation is happening this week. So then we'll have that done. It's just a matter of doing the uh, doing the concrete polishing and uh, and a few other things and that project will be wrapped up. A juvenile remodel floor covering is being put in as we speak. Um, Annex Four remodeling do like for health. Um, we're meeting with Aaron after the later on this morning and to discuss the uh, floor cover or floor covering is set and just to finish up what walls are gonna stay, what walls are gonna be removed. Um, radio tower, we got a, we finally got a date. June twenty-sixth is when they're gonna start installing the tower. Uh, some follow-up issues, follow-ups. Um, Oregon Trail Rally was this weekend, went well. A lot of people with that. Um, they were happy with the way everything went and uh, there's a little dam and they beat the heck out of a couple of roads, but we put them back together. They pay for that, so that's not a cost to taxpayers. Uh, Dallasport painting is to start at the end of May, uh, from what I've talked to uh, some of the members from the community council, they're gonna start painting the last week of May, first week of June. They're gonna paint the outside of the community center. We've gotten them to paint and everything. Uh, Mary Hill, there's no fair ground events this week, but there is a Mary Hill Memorial Hill Climb this Saturday and Sunday where they go up and down the uh, Mary Hill Loops Road. And do we have a couple of other things? Quick Attack Mill Site, I'm gonna, we got an email from the superintendent over there. Some kid, some kid got out, went through the fence. Uh, then they had to call the sheriff to go find the kid on the site. So I'm gonna go up, talk, try to schedule a meeting, see what he's talking about, but you know, we can only enclose the site so well.
Apparently there's a hole in the fence.
Yeah, there supposedly is a hole in the fence. I'll take a look at it.
We don't need a new fence.
No.
Need some wire.
We'll just fix the hole.
Sew back together and be done.
Keeping in mind, you're both been on the tour. You could go right up. If he runs up the side, he can go right underneath the fence. We walked through and you're in. I just. And we used to have a chain link fence there. We took it down because people were cutting it and driving it because it's too secluded back there. So that's why we put that gate up there and just get away with the fence. Because they could get in anyway. They can walk around the fence for that purpose. I mean, we can't fence the whole property.
And if you got a runner, the runner's gonna run and find the hole and.
Yes.
But.
Well, we'll fix the hole.
Really wise, let's, let's.
We'll fix the hole.
Back together.
Yes, we'll fix the hole and then uh, I just uh, waiting to see. I got some information from what they wanted. We, you know, have dealt with with uh, Reba- our Republic on that. So I'm not really sure where we're going next with the hand side, hand sanitizer disposal.
So I called uh, Jeff King this morning to make sure he got that email because I would like to see his stock inventory so that we can get a price to get it all gone in the same lot. Um, and I think I included you in that email chain that they're willing to send somebody out here to do a onsite inspection. So told Jeff this morning, that might be a good idea for him to facilitate that. Um, so I would say.
Do you wanna be the contact? You want us? How, how do we want?
No, it, it's you. I just wanna make sure Jeff is in it.
Okay.
And that they're doing everything they can to help us and now. I'm out.
Okay, so we have all the stuff that they, that they wanted. These, this is all.
Stuff. We don't have it for Jeff's.
No, I don't. That's Jeff's thing.
Yeah, and the kicker is I'm, that's was this was kind of a little kick in the pants to uh, get on it and get it all out in the same shipment hopefully. So we're not paying shipping twice.
Right, right.
Worry. Uh, if we do you, it isn't so much the disposal, it's all that freight. And if then he turns around and does it in three months, we have freight all over again. We need to do it all at one load.
You still want the cheapest disposal.
Which usually is one freight.
Right, right, exactly. Because we have, I said, we got it from Safety Clean and we got a price from um, uh, Republic, basically.
Republic's.
It's US uh, whatever they call them.
Ecology or something.
Yeah, US Ecology. And our price from, but at that point in time, they weren't proposing to pick it up. So that is the change. So we'll see now. If they're proposing to pick it up, then we'll see. Because we were at the same price with Safety Clean as we were with US Ecology. If we had it delivered for it. And I don't have anybody that has a hazmat.
Right.
Or I don't have a vehicle either.
That's why I got involved to see if the price would come down.
Right.
Now I'm uninvolved.
Yes, so if it, if it, if it's down there, if that price for three fifty includes the pickup, then we're at the same place and I don't really care. It can go there, if they're, especially if they're able to handle Jeff King's stuff.
Right. So that's, that's me is, that's the only reason I was involved to see if we can get a uh, better deal than maybe you were getting offered.
No, that, and you, well, you might have done that.
And so that was the only reason I was involved in it. So.
Okay.
I'm not involved in it anymore.
Because yeah, we, we can.
Will be stockpiling or reaching out to them to come take a look um, so that we can get it all in the same shipment.
Yeah, because either one is the same for, for pickup. No, no, I mean, for as far as how we have to package it, we talked to both of them. We're just gonna go get our fifty-five gallon drums with the sealable lid and then it all just goes in there. So we, we know what we need because we've talked to both side. We've talked to US Ecology too. So we can get all this stuff. So I can answer everything they want. It's that Jeff King.
Except for his information.
Right, I don't have his stuff. Exactly. So, okay, I, I gotta think I got, I got clear direction there. And I don't think we have anything else, do we?
I think so.
I have a few.
Okay.
Uh, rally race. Um, the grading afterwards, you said is covered by them. What do you just grade and then submit them a bill afterwards?
Yes, and they've been very good and they paid it every year.
I figured they would. Um, I don't know that it's for us, but apparently they uh, had a couple of vehicles speeding through communities that weren't, you know, as they, they race and then they go to the next spot and they race and they, in between that going to the next spot, there was some speeding through downtown center.
Oh.
Um, so there were some complaints and law enforcement was called to try to get speeders and apparently they were blowing the stop sign down on Dallas Mountain. Um, so uh, if you could uh, at least reach out to the rally race.
We will.
Um, and tell them to give a better job lecturing or I'll put speed traps out for them next year.
We will talk to them that they had some requests, some reports of speeded and they've been good partners.
As I said, I'm sure it's just one or two bad eggs.
And.
But if they can figure out which are the bad eggs and not invite them again, that makes us happy and we.
Exactly.
Complaints.
No, we will definitely reach out to them. We had some issues.
Um, and then the last thing, and this might be before your time. I've been kinda harping on it for a few years. Ideally, I would still like landfill funds that go to Public Works to be credited off of that building. So I would like to come up with some purchase agreement scenario so that whatever the price is for that building, every time we're giving you half a million or a million or whatever, it's deducting that price out. And we're almost at another budget cycle.
Yes.
Because it didn't happen last budget cycle or the budget cycle before that, but now we have a new director. So.
We'll check and get that right.
Still thinking um, that that's the way to go because if we're giving you money, we might as well be buying the building. I mean, pros and cons to that because.
There, yes, definitely.
Then we would have to.
You would have fitted the forty thousand dollar carpet bill. So now we just raised the value of the building now.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, that, I don't know that we're doing that, but we have a new board, so we probably should set.
Okay, well, we, we can give you a cost.
And decide how we wanna move forward. Yeah, that's what I had there. Um, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's up to you. We can do it now, we can do it later.
I can do it now.
Okay. So um, we were working with Rob because we have a project on the list to, to re- not replace the door because it's the chain link door for the sheriff to replace the motor. Well.
This is in the Sallyport.
In the Sallyport, yes. So uh, they had an accident there and uh, dropped the door. That was one of the problems because the door would come down if you had to pay attention. So if you hit the button, the door wouldn't stop. That was part of the motor, part of the system. We are gonna replace that. Well, they had an accident not too long ago and now they crushed, they basically ruined the door. So we have to replace the door. The door is expensive. The whole project's twenty-five thousand dollars now, not fifteen, which is what we have in budget. So I talked to Rob about, you know, maybe we could claim it on insurance because I don't have any extra money to pay for that. And I can't just, um, they also, and if I wanted to replace the door, I could wait, push the pro- I could have pushed the project off uh, because the motor still functioned. Now the motor doesn't function either. We burned up the motor on top of. So the doors doesn't open. It's just, it's really, it takes three people to open and close the door. And that is a safety issue for the sheriff for the jail because they pull through and that door is the chain link door. So you get airflow in the building. So um, yeah, I was gonna turn it over to the sheriff or turn it over to Rob at insurance. And uh, Rob's, you know, there might be other ideas, so I'll let Rob take it.
You need a mic, sir?
So Jeff has, I believe, fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Um, budgeted, so um, we need to come up with ten under any scenario. So if we filed a claim, they said they would consider it. We have a ten thousand dollar deductible, so we'll, we'd still have to come up with ten thousand dollars. Um, and then it would count as a claim against the county. Um, not so sure it's not easier just to find ten thousand dollars in um, somewhere and um, and then three supplemental process if we have to or just find that ten thousand. You know, want to assume the sheriff had it in his budget. That's, that's quite a bit of money. Um, and we should be able to come up with it somehow and not incur a claim against, uh, especially since it was damaged caused by us accidentally. Um, so it'd be kind of a double whammy to have a claim mark against us as well as coming up with the same amount of money.
So to me, our choices are on this issue. Um, I know he's talking about finding ten, but the difference is to me fifteen because we have a ten thousand dollar deductible. It's twenty-five thousand dollar project now. So we either find more, ten thousand more and pay for the whole twenty-five thousand dollar door out of county funds. Uh, or do we file a claim and potentially only pay ten thousand dollars out of county funds and get the insurance to cover the other fifteen grand? The negative is too many small claims might jack up your insurance premium. So it's kinda like, you know, your window glass shatters in your car. Do you call GEICO? You know, because you got a five hundred dollar deductible and the glass is six fifty, or do you just pay the buck fifty and not get your insurance go up? We don't know that it will cause the insurance to go up, but Skamania is leaving that insurance pool because they only have small claims and their insurance is high because they count everything the same. We're still new. So before I made an executive decision on which way to go, I wanted uh, board input because if we choose to go through the insurance, there could be ramifications um, with higher insurance costs later.
County damage caused by a county employee in an accident as opposed to a third party.
And it was a third party claim against the county, you know, um, so um.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's some, might be time on a small claim where you want the insurance involved because they're gonna be the ones going after.
Right.
Whoever has to pay.
Exactly.
In this regard, we don't need them for that. It's just we might be able to save the county fifteen thousand dollars, but we might end up paying it back next year premium time.
I think we kind of possibility that this could happen is squeeze the budgets at times. Money left over for these kinds of unknown emergencies. Over the years, you know, tighten everybody's budgets.
I would imagine it's early enough in the year that you budgeted fifteen. But I can't imagine you couldn't swing ten out of some other account until supplemental puts it back.
Yeah, we, we could swing it out of, out of it for supplemental, yes, but we would still need it at the end.
Yeah.
Yes, we could.
And we would have to come out of nondiscretional or reserve or something to make it up.
That figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it takes a while to get them on order and again, right now the sheriff cannot use it. So what they essentially do is they drive around and back. When they bring in me.
Technically, I'm fifty fifty. Turn it in or not turn it in. Just pay the money or not turn it in. So I wanted a second opinion or a third opinion, which isn't here. Um, on which way to go with that because I could go either way.
Do we have time to wait for Jen to see what she says?
Of the budget, the budget issue I don't think is a technical issue. The issue to me is whether we wanna risk the insurance going up. Um, the.
Another week.
Ten grand out of reserve.
Make or break us. Another week are you guys decide?
I mean, are we working to get the door fixed right now? We'll worry about funding later?
We can do that. We haven't done that. No. Because again, I don't.
Gotta be done one way or the other.
Yes.
So I don't, I wouldn't hold it up while we figure out.
Okay, well, we could start getting moving forward. I just didn't wanna spend money that we don't have. I don't have that authority.
Right.
Unless you wanna change your mind. Give me that. Yes.
We can't like not do it for the next five years. So regardless of which one we end up deciding who's paying for part of it, it's gotta get done. So we might as well move forward with the getting it done. And then if you wanna wait for Jen to figure out finance, but we're still gonna have policy decision on whether we wanna make a claim and risk the insurance going up or not make a claim. That's the policy that we're gonna have to come up with the answer on.
We're early in the year for how many moments we have to go for possible insurance.
We will know rate increases in July.
Be now in July of twenty twenty-four rate increase. So we've only got one small time. We wanna be good partners in the pool uh, as well and and. PA and I look each one.
And that insurance pool currently just counts claims. Um, so that's why Skamania left because all theirs are really small, but they had a big number of claims. So their insurance went up and they're, we're in our summer meeting, we're gonna discuss whether we wanna set that criteria differently. So you don't get hammered for having too many baby claims.
This is the only point so far this year that's been classified self-induced. If it can be as opposed to a third party. He has needs.
Now, we can get started on it, but does that affect it if we go through insurance?
No.
I mean, I, I would take pictures and stuff first, just in case.
We, we have all that stuff. Okay. Yeah, so it's reimbursement.
Yeah.
Especially if this is. My thing's on, especially if it's a safety issue and it's gonna be time ordering things.
Yes. Okay, we'll get started on.
We'll figure out how to pay for it. You just gotta figure out, get it, get it started, take your pictures and then.
We'll get it done.
We'll decide which route we're going through next week.
Okay, works for me.
Um, yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we are a smidgen early, but we will move on to department update from Code Compliance Officer George in the house.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jump right into it. Code Compliance is currently at thirty open cases, six cases have been closed since my department's last update. Uh, five cases were uh, investigated and found not to violate county code. One nuisance case was closed after being brought into compliance and site inspection verified completion.
What kind of nuisance case was that?
It was.
Not location, but what kind?
Crash.
Crash. Crash accumulation. How long was it an active case?
Uh, less than a month.
Oh, okay. So somebody called something in on him. You notified him. They cleaned it up. It's resolved.
And then I did inspection, closed it. Perfect.
Well done, sir.
Uh, site special was conducted on property of six hundred series on Woodland Road. The site inspection focused on a pile of trash uh, placed next to Livery Road, a neighboring uh, private road. The last inspection showed a reduction, the size of the accumulation of household garbage. On this inspection, bare ground was now visible. Most of what was left was scrap metal and miscellaneous non-perishable items that would not attract wildlife. As mentioned in the last update, the property owner is willing to continue cleanup, but admits having mobility issues that impair or limit the work he can realistically accomplish. Uh, during the previous conversation, the property owner agreed to no longer add unsecured, unsecured trash to the site, which appears, which he appears to be complying with. Uh, health issues and financial concerns are the main driving factor in granting the property owner time.
Em, on this one, are you, so you're not seeing any evidence that he might be moving the trash from this location onto a different section of his property?
No.
Okay.
I don't have documented um, removal of the trash, but I have driven past this property on several occasions. And I'll drive one day and he's, you know, there's a uh, a trailer full of trash and then the next day it'll be gone. So.
Um, Jim, good job. Next.
On May sixteen, twenty twenty-three, a site inspection was conducted on North Lake Drive showing the installation of fencing posts. As mentioned in the letter sent to the property owner, a uh, a form of compliance would be to erect a privacy fence to impede traffic from seeing the junk vehicles. A letter will be sent to the property owner praising his progress, but reminding him of the need of continuous improvement to not resume the clock on the grace period. Um, I haven't seen any vehicles uh, come out of the site, so I don't think he's, I don't think, I don't foresee him removing any of the vehicles that are on the property. It seems like he's. Uh.
Yeah, this could be a problem later, but if code says all you have to do is have a fence.
Yeah. Lem, Lem kinda went at it uh, through the approach of like uh, it being a junkyard. And I think he brought in someone from the state and they looked at it and they weren't worried about the environmental impact. So I did think about going that way again, but it seemed like the first time that uh, Lem had already looked into it and it didn't really get anywhere.
Right, for me, what it kind of scares me is if twenty years down the road, you have a twenty acre parcel that's so full of hulk vehicles that the guy just walks away. There's nothing salvageable on him anymore. He's e-baited everything off. And now you have a tax title foreclosure that costs you more money to haul away the junk vehicles that are on it than the properties actually were. So that one scares me, but if he's not violating the law.
Yeah.
I know years ago I had seen one with vehicles and the state did have an issue with oils and things. And so it did come to a cleanup on that one.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a difficult one and uh.
Do we have any regulations on junkyard? Did we inspect and oils and? I mean, do we have any? I mean, do we have anything in our code or they're either allowed or not allowed, or we just build a fence and we don't know they exist?
What comes to mind, um. It has to go through the state and then they send somebody over and they do the inspection. And then as far as, from memory, all that I can recall. That the county requires is a privacy fence. So they, all the vehicles have to be enclosed within the privacy.
So that if if they have more than X number of vehicles. They would be considered a junkyard, but that's through the state process and that would be a complaint to the state if they're operating without a license.
I think, yeah, uh, as long as it's run through an LLC, it's the state. As far as I'm aware, and that was again from this case because Lem Lem tried to run it.
That's the scary part of when they're in LLC, because then they can just walk away from the property and you can't go after their wealth.
And scrap metal prices right now are like, it's not worthwhile for a lot of people, um. I'm hoping that gets better, but I don't. I don't know very much about scrapping metal.
Ah, okay.
Uh, I attended virtual training provided by Washington Associate of Code Compliance, um. The training focused primarily on skip tracing, but also covered topics like officer safety, contact techniques and avenues of enforcement. Since the last training dates have been scheduled, um. Scheduled for September training. In the last update, I mentioned a singular, uh. Day training for the thirteenth. The update shows the conference was extended from the thirteen. Uh, from the thirteenth to the fifteenth, the course would focus on officer safety, junk vehicle certification, uh, communication skills and self-management. Um, the training. This this last training was really focused on bigger agencies. I don't, uh, you know, and the the guest speakers were from Texas. Which it sounds like Texas, uh, makes it their job a lot easier than mine. They, um. But, uh. Yeah, they, it it was, it was, it was good training. Um, I don't. Some of the stuff that they were suggesting, I don't think would be legal in Washington State, but it was good to see other people's, um. Resources and things that they, uh, they do. A lot of their departments are also, they they have a lot of people in code compliance. They were blown away that I was like one person to a county. Was like far fetched to them, but, um, yeah. But it was interesting. Um, I was out of the office from May first to the third due to personal reasons. Um, not sure if you guys have heard anything from, I had. Site inspections scheduled for these days and I didn't call. I didn't do it. I totally spaced it, um. I did call them back and apologize, but if you guys heard about it, um, that was my fault. I apologize. Personal is personal, sir.
The the training later in September, is that focused under Washington law then?
Yes, yeah, which I think would be, yeah, beneficial, yeah.
Yeah, you'll find out with the trainings that even some of them, you're only getting seventy percent affects you, but that seventy is a good seventy, so. Yeah, the only time I worry is on trainings that ten percent of it affects us and the other ninety doesn't.
Yeah.
We have people that attend those trains.
Yeah, definitely. Um, this. I'll I'll discuss it later with like housing stuff, so it'll be a three day event, so I'll have to.
So you have to check with staff. They will set you all up and tell you how to do everything. You will probably have to once they get it out. Um, get an agenda. Um, I would imagine it would have to be pre-approved by the board. Are we doing pre approvals for everybody or they just do their own thing and tournament afterwards?
I do know the the, uh, the conference, um, kind of linked everything together, so you just pay a certain amount and they cover. Housing and the training and. Yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, I would say, um, yeah, when you get the information. Um, submit it. We'll look at it. Make sure it's good. Sign it and you register and you're good to go.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
And then if you have any questions about other travel or mileage or what's covered or food or what county and what grade or whatever, just. Ask staff questions now.
Okay.
Perfect. Good job this time, sir.
Thank you.
You're growing. I see it.
One day.
Spread your wings, young flower. Yeah, I'm assuming there's a case he needs to come up and I'm, is that the same reason out?
So Lynn has received a resignation for one of her employees and we are requesting, um, permission to. Um, post, requesting verbal permission for the building plans examiner. Steps one through three, it's going to be vacant in a couple weeks.
Couple of months.
Couple of months.
It'll be here until middle or end of August.
Is this the recent new?
Yes, they're moving to Arizona.
So it's.
Oh, no.
I did, but. No, um, he'll be here till the middle or end of August. I would like a few weeks of overlap if I find a good candidate. Um, just so they can, you know, be a little more comfortable before it's just them doing it, but, um. You know, he let me know ahead of time, hasn't given me the written yet. Um, but they're tentatively scheduled to move between the middle and end of August.
Um, so do you have a firm date?
Not yet.
So how are you gonna do the couple weeks if you don't have a firm date?
I just know it'll be middle to end of August.
So a couple weeks might be two. It might be four because you don't know.
But if possible, I would like to post now, get it out there because it's probably gonna take a while to find someone suitable.
Um, do you have a problem with?
No.
Allowing extra staff to cover that two to four week transition period?
No, and Lynn will get closer when he submits his letter.
Yeah.
More than four. No more than four weeks.
Overlap.
Yeah, two to four. It wouldn't be longer.
Okay.
Um, and and once I get his written, you know, timeline, then I can know. More of what a start date would be for the new person if I. If I'm lucky enough to find someone.
Okay, yeehaw.
Thank you.
It's hot down there.
He could commute.
Hey, it's like a hundred and five degrees down there. He'll be back.
Thank you.
I mean, there's extra time in there because I'm sure we have, uh, executive with landfill discussion. If you'd like to do it this morning, we can.
Sure.
That way it gives us some afternoon planning.
Yes. And that's kind of pressing.
Let's just, uh, fifteen minutes, um, adequate for a start. Before I do it all. Get my clock ready. Alrighty, so with that, we are, uh, gonna end the morning work session for the public. We are gonna go into executive session. In accordance with RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one zero, print one, print I. Up, sorry, print D, uh, to review negotiations on the performance of public bid contracts. When the public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause the likelihood of increased costs. Uh, we're gonna go in for fifteen minutes. Uh, we are not gonna have any business after executive. We will just recess for lunch. Uh, so everybody else, we will just see you back here at one o'clock. Uh, and to staff, I don't mind if you want to literally shut the zoom off or if you want to just. Shut the mic and the cameras.